I pledge allegiance to the flag and the invocation of fellow given by Counselor Brown this evening.
Luke?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Brown?
Will you bow with me, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for this opportunity to be here tonight, Lord, to do the business of your city. We thank you for each person that's here tonight, for each employee that works so hard for Prattville, and we pray, Lord, tonight for discernment and wisdom as we go forward to conduct the business. We thank you for all the blessings you've given us, Father. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Striplin?
Here.
Counselor Wood?
Here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Miller?
Here.
Counselor Renninger?
Here.
Counselor Bowles?
Here.
Counselor Fink?
Here.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order officially. The character trait of the month is truthfulness, earning future trust by accurately reporting past facts. Fellow counselors, you should have received copies of the minutes from the August 21st public hearing and council meeting. This time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes or entertain any amendments to those minutes.
So moved.
Counselor Miller, did you want to offer an amendment?
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear earlier. That's on last meeting's minutes, so not current.
Okay, you want to amend last minutes?
Right.
Okay.
Sorry.
So we're back to the approval of the council minutes in the public hearing of August the 21st, and Counselor Fink has moved that we approve that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes from August the 21st signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, those minutes are approved. Counselor Miller?
Yes, Mr. President. If I may, I'd like to offer a correction to the set of minutes that we approved at our last minute, at our last meeting, and those were our minutes from our August 7th meeting. The item is Resolution Number Two, and basically, it was a resolution that we actually amended and adopted the amended resolution, but the minutes don't address the fact that we actually did the amendment, voted on it, and adopted the amended resolution. So I offer the following correction, that that amendment was approved seven to zero, and there being no further discussion, the amended resolution was adopted with the following results. No change in the end point, no change in the vote or anything, just that house cleaning to reflect that we did also vote on the amendment.
Okay, you've heard the proposed amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Is there any discussion on the proposed amendment? All those in favor of adopting the amendment signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Minutes are approved as amended. Been informed by legal counsel that the city council will have to go into executive session at the end of our agenda, so we're going to change things up just a little bit for our next item. Any comments that folks present would like to bring before the council on any item, it doesn't have to be on the agenda, please come forward at this time. Raise your hand to be recognized. That's on any item. Mr. Hall?
Y'all are a good-looking bunch. Well, some of y'all are. I'm here to promote the Todd County Fair. As always, I do this, and I appreciate your help in the past, especially the city's help and everybody on the council. This year, we're going to do a little bit different. We've got some good news and bad news. The bad news is, we will not be able to take any articles for our arts and crafts due to circumstances beyond our control just this year. We won't be able to. The good news is that, you know, every year, we've given city employees and county employees. Last year, everyone got one pass. This year, everybody's getting a free pass. Everybody that comes to the fair is getting a free pass to the fair. That's in celebration of our 45th Todd County Fair, and appreciation to everybody that's shown. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Mr. Hall? Comments? Counselor Miller?
I just, I know, Mr. Hall, that you have put in all sorts of time, energy, and effort, and this is a labor of love. You and your fellow Fair folks, we were talking about Mr. Meisler earlier, and I know there are others, but I want to take this opportunity, since I won't be up here much longer, to publicly express my appreciation for what you've done with the fair. That is a real gem in the community's quality of life, and you've just been a phenomenal leader in that area, so I want to voice my thanks to you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Would anyone else like to come before the council and address the council on any item of business? Yes, ma'am. Please, I believe I had the opportunity of meeting your son last week, did I not?
Yes, sir, you did. Jim Michael, yes, he is. My name is Michelle Arrington-Stice. I live on 1189 East Main Street. I've been a resident of Prattville for 14 years. I come to you again, I know you guys haven't had time to discuss or go over what I brought up last time, so I come with a new thing. And once again, it's just to ask you for a clarification and understanding, because I'm a little confused, and there's some contradictions that need to be clarified. And this is on selling used vehicles in parking lots or in homeowners' own front yards. We had a gentleman friend that we know of who put a car in his parking lot up at Jet Pet for sale, and Becky from financial sent him a letter informing him that he was not allowed to do that, and he needed to remove the vehicle. He did so do that. AutoZone, though, has had boats, vehicles, and all kinds of items for sale in their parking lot, and the AutoZone assistant manager informed us that the Prattville Police Department informed him that he could sell them there as long as before the evening was done, they were moved or they would be towed at the owner's expense. Where Billy Linum, over at his tire store, has three or four vehicles for sale in front of his lot, and they've been there for weeks. Also, the wine cellar has had a motorcycle over there, and I'm sorry, I know this might sound petty, I counted five days before it was moved, and I think the only reason it was moved today was because of the weather. So my question to you, and to hope that you can clarify me, what is the rule? We've also been told that people cannot have more than one vehicle to two vehicles in their yard at a time to sell. Everybody keeps saying that you have to have a car dealer license in order to sell these vehicles, but there are other locations that are. And so I kind of feel like, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, because not everybody is being told the same thing. And I have been told three different things by three different people. So if the council could please clarify, I would be much happy.
May I defer to our city attorney as far as that's concerned, because you're talking about codes and laws. Can you address that for us, Mr. McDowell?
Quite honestly, I'd have to look at our ordinance to see just what it says. I do not know off the top of my head.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Duke, would you have the answer to that, please?
Mr. Bowles, I'd have to look at each individual case, but generally, if you're trying to sell your own car in your neighborhood, on your own property, that's allowed. But if you're operating as a business, say, as a car dealer is defined by the state in residential area, that would not be allowed. As far as the particular cases she's talking about, I have to look into that and see, you know, what the specifics are on those cases. But in a business area, it's a little different. There are some car sales allowed, and she's described several different scenarios that are treated differently by our ordinance. So I'd be glad to look into every one of those. I tried to make some notes real quick, and I'm sure that she can provide me a pretty good list, but we can get you an answer on every one of those.
If you don't mind, would you email me those, too? Because they're in my district, and I would like to get back with them personally on it.
Sure. And we'll try to also provide a little bit of the guidance on that. The real distinction is between a residential area and whether or not it's your own personal vehicle. There are certain thresholds that you pass under state law that would classify you as a dealer, and that certainly is not allowed in a residential area.
Also, I have, this actually came up with another residence while I was campaigning, and he had the same issue, saying he tried to sell a car one time, and that Ms. Stewart came up and tried to fine him for doing it, and said they were going to tow the car, and was the first one he sold that year. Could you find out how many they can sell in a year's time in a residential neighborhood?
If they're selling their own personal car, there shouldn't be any limitation, but if they would be classified by the State Department of Revenue as a dealer, and that's really based on the number they sell, and I can get you that answer.
That's the number, yeah, that's what I'm meaning, is the number.
Then they would be considered a business.
Because he had the same complaint, that they were told they couldn't do it, but he'd only sold one car, and he didn't understand why he was being told or harassed, was the words he used, harassed, overselling his vehicle in his front yard.
And I would be, I'll be glad to talk with Ms. Stewart and find out the specifics of that case, because, like I said, every case is a little bit different, and we try to treat them based on their individual merits.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Anyone else like to address the council on any item of business this evening? Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, sir.
Is there somebody else? Mr. Brand, did you raise your hand? I'm sorry, would you like to come forward, please? Good evening, sir.
Lonnie Brand, 258 Terry Lane, Prattville. The only quick question I have is Resolution Number One, talking about the auditing cost of $77,000.
Yes, sir.
Wanted to see if anyone here knew what the auditing cost was last year.
Mr. Bowles, I can answer that question for you.
The audit cost last year was $75,000 plus $12,000 for a single audit, and that's also in the resolution for this time.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council on any item of business? It does not have to be on the agenda. Okay, Mayor, let's have your report, please, sir.
And I promise I will keep it short. Yes, you guys have heard that before. First off, I just really want to commend Kathy Dickerson and her staff for all the hard work they've done over this election cycle here, but also besides her, it was car potteet with the Board of Registars and the staff from the Judge Appropriate's office, but then also, we had several employees around here that were able to assist her through this process, which was one of my first in the mayor role, and believe you me, behind the scene, there's a lot more that goes on than the average person really knows. So I'd like to commend her for all of her hard work. I know she's put in quite a few long hours, and I think that everything went very, very well. So thank you for all your hard work. The other thing, just want to pretty much mention, is that our LPGA, remind everybody that it is starting, starts on the 20th of September, and which is just a couple of weeks or so off, and does have a pro-am on September the 19th. But as certainly anybody who's been around any of the tournaments that go on during this timeline, there's a lot of people coming in from the outside. We've already had set-up crews coming in, so it's in one shape, form, and fashion, is already boosting the economy of the city of Prattville. And so it's, has been a very good venue for the Prattville over the last several years that it's been coming here. Besides that, I do, on our agenda tonight, Resolution Number One, I do hope that you guys will go ahead and approve that tonight, because you're well aware of, it's mandated that an audit is done, and Jackson Thornton has been utilized by the city of Prattville for numerous years, and they do a very professional job, and have always been very open and very easily to meet with counselors, the mayor, and answering in all questions. But that's just about as short and sweet as I can make it.
Any questions of our mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
When is it that you're going to present the budget? Now, I don't see this on our agenda.
Yes, I didn't have that written down. How could I forget that?
Well, I don't know.
You'll see in front of you.
I've got this big binder here in front of me here.
You'll see in front of you, a black binder. It has a lot of good information, detailed information, that I think will help navigate everybody through this budget, and there's been a lot of hard work put into this budget, not only by myself, but department heads, finance director, you know, I've met with the finance committee, and so anyway, it's, through this budget that has been crafted, I think that you'll find that it comes up to be somewhere just under $36 million, 35.7. It has a reserve set aside. It is broken down into pretty much two different types. It has our general fund budget, and then it also has our enterprise fund budgets. And with it, I think you'll find that there's no furloughs involved. That is one thing that this city had to experience there for a while, and I think that we learned that that is by far one of the most difficult tasks that, in trying to run a service-worthy business like the city of Prattville. And it's, even though it was a very difficult situation that we went through there, I think it was a necessary situation, but I think we have a lot of hard work from the council, department heads, employees, sacrifices by all. I think that we have shown that there was some belt tightening that needed to be done. We have done that belt tightening. I look forward to working closely with you guys on this budget, and hope that you'll set up some meetings for this. But I do present this to you as a body tonight, and hopefully, you'll be able to work on it and pass it before your end of this quadrillion.
Well, since you gave me the lead-in, there will be a work session next Monday night, August the 10th, 6:00 p.m., at Doster Community Center for the city councils, specifically to address the budget, the proposed budget. And I would encourage each council member to review the mayor's proposed budget and come next Monday night with questions and comments prepared. Next Monday night, Doster, 6:00 p.m., work session exclusively for the budget. Okay? Is that all, Mayor?
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll go to committee reports. Counselor Striplin, do you have a report?
No, sir.
Counselor Wood?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Miller?
Yeah.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Fink?
No.
The finance committee did meet specifically to discuss the items of the budget prior to the mayor's presentation to the full council. We expressed some preliminary concerns, and some adjustments were made before the council got this copy, and that was the sum total of the hour and 45 minutes that the finance committee met, strictly on the budget. We'll get into the agenda items for tonight. First item is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign an engagement letter with Jackson Thornton and Company, P.C., for auditing services for fiscal year 2012 at a cost of $77,000. Counselor Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Jackson Thornton and Company, P.C., provided auditing services to the city of Prattville for the fiscal year 2011, and whereas it has been determined that Jackson Thornton and Company, P.C., will best serve in their auditing capacity to provide the city with the necessary expertise in this endeavor, and whereas the city of Prattville desires to continue the audit service relationship, and whereas the city of Prattville desires that the city's fiscal 2012 audit service be awarded to the firm of Jackson Thornton and Company, P.C., now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a contract with Jackson Thornton and Company, P.C., and funds in the amount of $77,000 are hereby approved and appropriated to be paid from the fiscal year 2013 general budget. Be it further resolved, if a single audit is necessary, the cost will be an additional $12,000, adopted this fourth day of September. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Striplin has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Fink. I'm going to defer to legal counsel. Since this encumbers funds from a budget that we have not yet approved, do we need to suspend the rules?
You'll suspend them when the money's expended, so you wouldn't have to today, because you haven't spent the money. Once you approve the budget and it's in it...
So we don't have to suspend the rules to authorize this engagement letter, even though we're allocating funds that we haven't approved yet?
Well, you have, you're going to authorize him to sign it, so you're going to have to pass it, but as far as the expenditure of the money, once you pass the budget, I assume this will be in it. Therefore, then, when you pass the budget, you won't have to, no, you do not have to today.
We don't have to suspend the rules. That's all I needed to know. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to declare the structure at 135 Pierce Lane an unsafe structure and authorize its demolition. Counselor Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas, under the authority of Title XI, Chapter 53B of the Code of Alabama, 1975 as amended, the Prattville Planning Department declared the structure at 135 Pierce Lane to be unsafe and a public nuisance, and whereas, on July 17th, 2012, the Prattville Planning Department ordered the demolition of the structure at 135 Pierce Lane by August 31st, 2012. And whereas, the Prattville Planning Department's order was delivered by certified mail to the last known property owners and to all parties having interest in the property. And whereas, an appeal was received by the city clerk and the planning department, and a public hearing was held on August 21st, 2012, as required by Title XI, Chapter 53B. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the structure located at 135 Pierce Lane is unsafe and a public nuisance that must be repaired or demolished, as instructed by the Prattville Planning Department's order. Be it further resolved that the planning department is authorized and instructed to receive quotes from licensed contractors to have the structure removed at 135 Pierce Lane, and shall present the city council with the lowest responsible quote at the earliest available council meeting. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Fink has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Miller. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Counselor Fink?
Yeah, I guess, this is more for Joel at this point, the question I've got. The property owner brought up an issue at the last meeting, and this, the action taken tonight is independent of other properties as well, but he brought up a very interesting statement about another property that we have in our downtown area, and it happens to be, I guess, just a couple of blocks over on Fourth and Chestnut, that I know that structure was damaged in a fire pretty severely, or at least it appears, back in 2010. And I don't want to muddy the waters up with this resolution, per se, or the action that we take here, but he brought it up, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to discuss this or not, but, you know, what's the status, or what course of action, or should this be discussed at a different time? Council President Renninger? Or, I mean, I think that that house is long overdue to be addressed as well, and I'm just not sure why we're not farther along in that process with that house as well.
Your point...
And I only bring it up at this point because he brought it up.
Yeah, your point is well-taken, but I think we are mixing the properties here.
Okay.
The issue, where one of us is the one on Pierce Lane.
Okay. Where would it be appropriate, I guess, just in the general comments at the end?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Save that till the end. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions pertaining to this proposed resolution? Counselor Wood?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Joel, just one more. Will you give your gift to this body, or to me, what has transpired and where the planning department stands on this particular property, irregardless of any other, just this particular property?
Yes, sir. Like all dilapidated structures, as you well know, we dealt with several in your district. We try to exhaust all possibilities before we get to this point. In most cases, we try not to expend city funds for demolition, because it's difficult to recoup those costs, because there's often not a clear owner, or the lot won't sell, or something of that nature. In this case, we have tried to work with the property owner to deal with the damaged structure after a fire at that location. We are certainly not saying that the house can't be repaired. It probably can, to some extent, not sure the exact expense there, but the order said repair it or demolish. It is not a habitable structure. It is in violation of the city's minimum housing code. It is also located in a floodplain. Until it was damaged to this extent, it was allowed to continue without having to be brought up to modern standards for a house in the floodplain. So we've tried to work with the property owner to take action on this, on the structure, and they have not complied with the city's request or orders to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions on this proposed resolution? Thank you, Mr. Duke. All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the release of funds in an amount not to exceed $16,000 for one Roots Easy Air X2 factory blower and the materials needed to install the blower for the city of Prattville wastewater department. Counselor Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas, there is a need for one Roots Easy Air X2 factory blower and the materials needed to install the blower in the wastewater department at the Pine Creek Plant, whereas the cost of the blower is $14,944, and whereas the cost of materials needed to install the blower will not exceed $1,056. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed $16,000 for one Roots Easy Air X2 factory blower and the materials needed to install the blower are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Jim House and Associates Incorporated, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2012 budget line item wastewater department capital outlay. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Miller has proposed this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the hiring of one urban management service maintenance worker one for the urban management department at an annual cost not to exceed $31,532. Counselor Brown, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Urban Management Department has a need to hire a service maintenance worker one, and whereas the city council of the city of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the annual cost of such employee will not exceed $31,532... exceed $31,532 for salaries and benefits, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to $31,532 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one service maintenance worker, one, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2012 budget line items, urban management department, salaries and wages, workman's compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the human resources department is hereby authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Brown has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to reappoint Mr. James Davis to the Montgomery Area Mental Health Authority. Counselor Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas the city of Prattville participates in the operation of the Montgomery Area Mental Health Authority by the appointment of members to the board, and whereas a vacancy has occurred on the board due to the term expiration of James Davis, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that James Davis is hereby reappointed to a six-year term as a member of the Montgomery Area Mental Health Authority and shall, and shall serve his said term until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. So moved, Mr. President.
Counselor Fink has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to grant a retail beer license, off-premise only, license to Paula McCullough of Diamond Quality Food Stores, LLC, doing business as Prattville Diamond Quality. Counselor Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas Paula McCullough of Diamond Quality Food Stores, LLC, doing business as Prattville Diamond Quality, has obtained a business located at 203 Interstate Loop in Prattville, Alabama, which is a retail store, and whereas owner of said business has applied for an off-premise retail beer license, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby approves the issuance of an off-premise retail beer license to the business located at 203 Interstate Loop, Prattville, Alabama, to Paula McCullough of Diamond Quality Food Stores, LLC, doing business as Prattville Diamond Quality. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Counselor Wood has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Fink. Is there any discussion pertaining to this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to set a public hearing for a restaurant retail liquor license for Caesar Compass Reyes of El Patron Mexican Grill of Prattville, LLC, doing business as El Patron Mexican Grill. Counselor Striplin, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville adopted ordinance book 97, page 002, on January 21st, 1997, for the purpose of setting public hearings to allow public comment for licenses, including restaurant retail liquor license, and whereas Caesar Compass Reyes, owner of El Patron Mexican Grill of Prattville, LLC, doing business as El Patron Mexican Grill, located at 2152 Cobb's Ford Road, Prattville, Alabama, 36066, has made application for said license. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby sets a public hearing for October the 2nd, 2012, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at city hall for said license application. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Striplin has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wood. Is there any discussion pertaining to this proposed resolution to set a public hearing? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed by a light sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to set a public hearing for a retail beer on or off-premise license and retail table wine on or off-premise license for Cindy Stevens of Cindy Enterprises, LLC, doing business as Pasta Mill and Grill. Counselor Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas the city of Prattville adopted ordinance book 97, page 002, on January 21st, 1997, for the purpose of setting public hearings to allow public comment for license, including restaurant retail liquor license, and whereas Cindy Stevens, owner of Cindy Enterprises, LLC, doing business as Pasta Pizza Grill and Grill, located at 205 South Court Street, Prattville, Alabama, 36067, has made application for said license, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby sets a public hearing for October the 2nd, 2012, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at city hall for said license application. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Counselor Wood has moved the resolution to set a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution to set a public hearing? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various witted lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. Counselor Brown, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes, and other vermin. May cause the further spread of weeds, may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property, and may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas Section 1167-1 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended permits the city council of the city of Prattville to declare an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds to be a public nuisance. And whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties at the following addresses and determined the existence of an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. 531 Allenville Road, 744 Buena Vista, 1795 Windermere Avenue, 1797 Windermere Avenue, 1142 East Main Street, 835 Peachtree Street, first vacant lot at corner of Greencrest and Martin Luther King Drive, second vacant lot on corner of Greencrest and Martin Luther King Drive, 821 Cobblestone Curve, 1808 Edinburgh Street, and 209 J Street. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby declares the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at the above listed addresses to be a public nuisance, and the owners of said property, as they appear in the records of the Otaga County or Elmore County Revenue Commissioners, are ordered to abate the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds, and the owners of said property are ordered to appear before the city council of the city of Prattville at a public hearing at 6:00 PM on October 2nd, 2012, in Prattville City Hall. Notice of such hearing and a copy of this resolution shall be sent by certified mail to the owners of said property. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Counselor Brown has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Is there any discussion pertaining to this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is an ordinance to surplus one ambulance vehicle module from the fire department. Counselor Miller, will you introduce this ordinance, please?
Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the fire department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. Totaled ambulance vehicle module. Be it further ordained that the city council instructs the mayor to scrap said ambulance vehicle module and that proceeds be deposited into the general fund. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Miller has moved this ordinance for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wood. By point of order, this ordinance will hold over to our next regular meeting unless there's a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Miller. Any discussion on the proposals to suspend the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, the rules are suspended and the ordinance is properly before us. Any further discussion on this proposed ordinance? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, the ordinance is adopted. Next item on our agenda is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Central Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission for administrative services for a CDBG float loan awarded to Frost Lee at a cost up to and not to exceed $10,000. Counselor Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas on May 1st, 2012, Resolution Book 2012, page 40, the city council authorized the mayor to make an application for a CDBG float loan on behalf of Frost Lee. And whereas the CDBG project entitled Frost Lee Float Loan, project number LREDFL11002, has been approved. And whereas Central Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission will provide the administrative services necessary to carry out this project. And whereas for services rendered, the city agrees to reimburse Central Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission in an amount up to and not to exceed $10,000. And whereas the city shall be reimbursed for such costs by the CDBG grant. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that funds up to and not to exceed $10,000 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Central Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2013 general fund budget. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby authorizes, empowers, and instructs the mayor to enter into an agreement with Central Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission for administrative services. So moved, Mr. President.
Counselor Striplin has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Mayor, do I understand that we're just used, we're being used as a pass-through agency?
Yes, sir. The cost of, any cost arrived from this will be paid back to the city on this. It's strictly, we're just strictly a pass-through.
Okay. That's the way I thought I understood it. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear to everyone.
Yes, sir. With passage of this, it should enable roughly about 100 jobs to come to Prattville.
Outstanding. Any further comments on this proposed resolution by the council members? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, this resolution is adopted. This exhausts our regular agenda. Do we have any agenda items to come from the floor tonight? Seeing none, we'll take reports from the mayor. Mayor, do you have any closing comments before we go into executive session? Counselor Striplin?
One brief comment. I too express appreciation to the city clerk and her staff for the fine work they did during the election process. Thank you.
Counselor Wood?
No, sir.
Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Miller?
No, thank you.
Counselor Fink?
Yes, sir. I guess I would take this opportunity as well. I know I was fortunate enough to be in the role that I serve here, to be on the interview committee with President Renninger when we interviewed for a city clerk. And while we had a tremendous number of qualified candidates, it became extremely obvious to me that there was one candidate that rose head and shoulders above everybody else. And aside from her abilities as day-to-day, she's also been through several election cycles in other communities and stuff. So, Kathy, I will say you outdid yourself as well. Thank you very much, as did everybody else that was involved in that whole process. The last thing, and I'll just touch on it here rather briefly, is that, you know, Joel, it's not necessary maybe to have comments tonight, but I would like to have a little better understanding, because I've had quite a few people ask, especially since the last meeting, that it appears that, you know, we've got the house over there on Fourth, and I think it's Chestnut, that was damaged, I guess, two years ago in a fire, and still continues to be, in my opinion, a bit of an eyesore with, it doesn't seem to be that we're making any progress, or it doesn't seem that the property owner is really doing much to rehab the property. If you could, I mean, you can send us out an email to each of us, it's perfectly fine. I know that house. I would hate to see that house demolished. It does have a tremendous provenance. It does have a history to the house that I would hate to see that happen. I would just like to see it fixed, so it's no longer the eyesore that it is, because everybody sees that. You know, down on Pierce Lane, the neighbors certainly see it, but for the most part, you don't have a tremendous amount of traffic down there. But this one is very visible, and I think it's way overdue for it to be fixed or start the process of condemnation. So if you could just send over the next week or so an email, just kind of giving an update on that, I would certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
I've been advised by our legal counsel that we must go into executive session. When we come out of executive session, the meeting tonight will come to a close. There'll be no further business. We thank you for being here with us tonight. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Counselor Miller has moved that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, we are in executive session. We'll go to the conference room.